We are conducting this evening's city council meeting in a virtual setting. Council members and staff are participating from remote locations. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live. This evening on Spectrum Channel three and twenty-two, ATT U-verse Channel ninety-nine and or else agenda TV at YouTube dot com or any or may access remotely via Zoom. From a PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, Android device at WWW dot zoom dot com. Are we sure that's right? Actually, Tracy, I thought it was zoom dot US. Is it really zoom dot com? You're muted, but anyway, okay.
I may have actually cut that off, but I think dot US is correct.
Zoom, okay, or by phone at six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, nine, one, two, eight. Meeting information for joining via Zoom is outlined on tonight's agenda. Please remember to mute your mics when not speaking and council members of making a motion or seconding a motion, please do so using your last name. In order for the clerk to hear and report correctly. And without further ado, I'll turn over. We've got Pastor West Harding of the Bridge Church here to do our invocation, followed by Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel to lead the pledge of allegiance. So. I'll turn it over you, Pastor Harding.
Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing prayer to go in this chamber over this meeting, and thank you so much. For allowing prayer in the community. I know it makes a big difference in here. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this community that we live in. Thank you for the leaders, civil servants that keep everything running so well. They are often overlooked when there are no problems. So I'd like to acknowledge them tonight and letting them know that we. Our church, our congregation, my family pray for them and their families often. Tonight, I'd like to pause and say thank you for covering our community with your protection with covering by covering our community with your grace, your mercy. And cooperation in our homes and in our neighborhoods. Thank you, Lord, for the assembled leaders. The assembled community workers and the assembled servants that are here on this video conferencing call. And we also ask for the protection of our families here in El Segundo and across America. Protect us from evil and harm while bringing us into the light of things that are not of you. Continue to cover our community with your love, your peace and your cooperation. Guide us into meaningful discussion that is unifying and not divisive. Let our passion for the good of our community draw us closer to one another and not separate us. Thank you, Father, for your presence. Thank you, Father, for your covering, and thank you for your love. Amen.
Thank you. If you please rise and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Pastor Harding. All right, Madam Clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Drew.
Here.
Councilmember Nickel.
Here.
Councilmember Perstuck.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimental.
Here.
And Mayor Boiles.
Here.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're on to public communications. Those wishing to speak via Zoom. Please click the hand icon and the host will announce your name when it's turned to speak. When it's your turn to speak, and those are general, I think the hand icon is in the participants dialogue box. If you're dialing from a phone, you'll need to press nine to raise the icon hand.
Star nine.
What's I'm sorry, star nine. Yeah, star nine. What did I say? Nine? Star nine. Thank you. And we won't see you, but we'll hear you if you have public comments. So Madam Deputy City Clerk Shilling, is there anyone in attendance via Zoom wishing to speak?
Yes, Chris Ediman has just raised his hand. Give me one moment and he should be able to unmute himself and speak.
Thank you.
I'm good. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Hello, I've came to city council meetings in the past six years talking about the skate park. And I know that recently the the parks and rec is going up with. What needs to be refinished, where the money is going to. I've been working with Michelle and other people in the parks recently, and I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. About the skate park renovation. I am aware that the teen center did get eight hundred thousand dollars and. In a grant for renovation. So I just really wanted to speak about skate park. Are you guys aware of the skate park in town? Yes, okay. Well, I do have a three D digital model. And I have a link to that, that a lot of the people in the parks are already seen.
Oh. So little icon. We hey, Mr. Mitnick, where can you mute yourself, please? Thanks, sir. Thanks. We're here in some background noise. Okay, Chris, continue, please.
Okay, well, the the total cost for the renovation, which would be a demolition and a full remodel, I've already got the design for free. It's about three hundred and forty thousand dollars. My whole thing is, you know, our skate park, we're a surf community, you know, surf skate community. A lot of new residents coming in with a lot of younger kids. And it is an eyesore on grand. It looks like a little gel area. It's next to a beautiful Boy Scout building. And we know that the inside and the outside of the teen center needs to be remodeled. So I think it'd be great to kind of put this, you know, in the forefront of the residents to vote on. To to have it renovated within the next, hopefully, year or two. I mean, I've been pushing this for for about six years. And action sports as far as biking, skateboarding, surfing. You know, Jack's Bike Shop on Main Street is just blowing out of bikes every week. It's like, it's really. It's really taken stride in this pandemic. So. Working on a skate park right now would be would be great for El Segundo. It'd show a lot of support to the community. And that's what I have right there.
All right. Thank you, sir. When we're done with public comments, we'll probably circle back and ask if the city manager has some commentary there because it is something we've talked about in the past. Thank you for being on.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, of course. All right, Madam Clerk, is there anyone else?
No, there is no one else for public communication.
Okay, and have you received and no one's called in either? At this point, no. Okay. Have you received any written public comments?
I have not.
Okay. Mr. Mitnick, would you take a moment and address Mr. Item's commentary on skate park?
Please, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You'll recall that the gentleman is right. There was eight hundred thousand dollars put in the budget last time around. And what council ultimately decided on is we have an RFP on the street right now. For firms to look at doing an assessment of Rec Park to look at all of the. Uses out there to see where the greatest need is, and the skate park will definitely be part of that. And Melissa McCollum, our community services director, can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the deadline for those proposals is December fifth. So we are aware, staff will follow up with the gentleman, let him know exactly where we are in this process by taking a look at the skate park and the teen center as part of the big picture. And when and as the assessment and analysis is done. And if funding is available, then through the the next CIP process, this issue will be addressed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, we have a special presentation. We've got a holiday events update. I saw Ryan Delgado with Drexton Park. He was on here earlier. Mr. Delgado, you there? There you are.
Yes. Good evening, Council. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Doing quite well. And now very pleased to share our community services department upcoming holiday plans. You know, this year we've all had to make some major adjustments in life, and we haven't been able to celebrate our traditional holidays in the way we wanted. Whether it be with the tree lighting or the Santa sleigh, but you know, we worked hard to come up with some new ways to celebrate, and you guys all saw that with the holiday trunk or treat. Recreation and library staff have been working with members from the Chamber of Commerce, service groups, community groups, to give the city several ways to celebrate this year. One of the ways we're celebrating started off today at the El Segundo Aquatic Center with the Holiday Hustle. Staff over there have challenged swimmers to a friendly competition to see who can swim the most laps during this holiday season at the Aquatic Center. Very easy to participate. Go on our website at ESrec.org. Register for it and count your laps every time you're at the pool swimming and on your way out. Give that number to staff and they will have a board out there. I heard it was a quite competitive first day at the Aquatic Center with. A lot of laps being put in. So staff is really excited to see people get in shape, especially after the Thanksgiving meals we all just had. The next piece we have is Santa delivered a special mailbox to the library and the checkout building this year. Kids can write a letter to Santa, drop it off at the mailbox in front of the library. Or at the checkout building and recreation park. Kids will be asked to leave a return address on there, and they will receive a handwritten a handwritten letter back from Santa himself. So that'll be a pretty neat one for all the the young ones in town, getting a letter directly from Santa. So look for that on first of the month to the fifteenth. So that is available now for residents that come by. The library will also be putting on a holiday virtual craft and caroling program from home. On Thursday, December seventeenth at seven PM. Program will include craft and ornament making, music holiday performance and sing along plus other surprises. The holiday cheer bags will be available for library to go on December seventh while supplies last. So you can call over to the library and reserve your holiday bag today. And the other big piece we'll be working on is we all kick everything off in El Segundo with our tree lighting and our parade. Unfortunately, we are unable to have the parade in the traditional sense this year, but we're going to be doing a really nice reverse holiday parade in the Jawsland parking lot. The theme this year, since most of us will be staying at home, is home for the holidays. Join us as we celebrate this really nice lighted experience. Local community groups are getting together and building holiday displays. We're working with Jeff Kason, who some of you may know from. Our centennial celebration, our great lighted displays. So Jeff's working hard with his crew members to. Get the park really nice and lit up. And so we're going to have some some holiday cheer. As you drive through, you'll be able to turn your radio station in to some music and we'll be pumping holiday music into your car. The event again will be similar to the trunk or treat where we'll break the town into four quadrants and each quadrant will have its designated time. So look for that information soon through the Herald in our city website.
Awesome. Ryan, where'd you say the Santa mailboxes were at the library and you say Rec Park too at the?
Yes, checkout checkout building. So all you do is need to do a little self-addressed envelope, drop off your letter, and Santa will get back to you soon.
That's awesome. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks for being on. Yep. Happy holidays. Okay, we next up, we have a COVID nineteen updated council direction regarding the latest information available. Regarding city residents, businesses and facilities, and we have our emergency services manager Randy Collins on to present. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, good evening and to to you and the council, and thank you for having me. If you bear with me for a moment, I'm going to try to get the. PowerPoint up and running. Okay. Well, I come to you this evening unfortunately with not the greatest of news in regards to our COVID nineteen update. And quite frankly, this might be the literally the worst day of the pandemic thus far in terms of our numbers and. And what we're seeing across Los Angeles County. Here you have our our numbers that is often reported to all of you. Thirteen million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And number of cases across the US with two hundred and sixty-seven, three hundred and two thousand deaths. Within California, one million, two hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And then nineteen thousand, two hundred and eleven deaths. And then within Los Angeles County, four hundred and eight, five hundred and twelve thousand, and then seven thousand, seven hundred and one deaths. And then one number that we want to keep our eye on, which I'll talk about more here in a minute, is the two thousand, three hundred and sixteen confirmed hospitalizations. That was up one hundred and thirty-one from yesterday. Here in LA County, and that is one of our broken records today. And unfortunately, the last, last time we were at this level was in July. And our peak then on July twentieth was two thousand, two hundred and thirty-two. So we surpassed our hospitalization. Record unfortunately, and and it looks like we're going to continue to increase those numbers as we see. The number of new cases today was seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-three. So we can expect those hospitalization numbers to continue to increase. As well as the number of cases in ICU is five hundred and fifty-six, which is up thirty-two from yesterday. And then within El Segundo, we're at one hundred and ninety-seven plus four active cases since the beginning. And we estimate that approximately thirty individuals within El Segundo currently. Having the virus that we're that we know of. And then this is our five-day rolling average, and this is the average that, as many of you know, was something that we were keeping our eye on as far as if we hit. Forty-five hundred. That's when they were going to implement the new stay-at-home order and which, in fact, we we did hit, and that stay-at-home order was implemented earlier this week. And so currently that five-day rolling average is at five thousand and eighty-eight. The other stats that we continue to monitor is the state stats in terms of our adjusted case rate and our positivity rate in LA County. This is the the metrics that we monitor to look toward hopefully getting out of the that purple tier and moving up into the substantial or moderate tier. As as you know, we've been on a downward trend and and this week, the numbers today have continued to get worse. And today the state put our adjusted case rate at twenty point two and then our positivity rate at seven point zero. So that's the highest that they have been. Since they started tracking this blueprint for reopening the economy. And so that's another. Area there where we've exceeded the numbers today versus what we've seen throughout the entire pandemic. With regards to our South Bay numbers, Los Angeles County, again, that rate was twenty point two, up four point two from last Tuesday, and then seven point oh, up point four from last Tuesday. And then El Segundo's incident management team estimates the case rate in the in the South Bay cities using the same formula. That is used by the state to come up with their numbers. The South Bay city's case rate is at twenty-six point six, which is up again, three point one, and then fourteen point. Or fourteen even is the testing positivity rate of four point seven. And then here in El Segundo, twelve point uh twelve point eight case rate up three point four points and then four point seven testing positivity. Which is actually down, just just to hear, down point three. So we continue to see El Segundo comparatively speaking, good numbers to the rest of LA County and South Bay. But yet we're continuing to increase beyond what we would like to see. The effective reproduction number, that's basically the number that, you know, if if somebody has COVID nineteen, the number of people they can expect to infect. And and so that number has risen slightly and is at one point two, and if it's greater than one, the health experts tell us that they we could expect our numbers are. Her numbers to exponentially increase, our cases to exponentially increase because we're infecting more people than than we're. Containing. So all of that to say that as we hit some of those thresholds last week, we were expecting this and. The county implemented a restaurant closure order, which went into effect. Last week, but then was superseded by our current stay-at-home order. But on November, November twenty-fifth, they implemented this restaurant closure order. And which really took our restaurants and breweries here in El Segundo. Back to what we saw in in March and April, which was delivery and takeout only. And then those limitations went into effect November twenty-fifth and were to go through December seventeenth. Unfortunately, then shortly thereafter, we hit the threshold for the stay-at-home order that was issued and implemented on Monday. But with respect to the the restaurant order. The LA County Health Department provided a lot of reasoning during. The Board of Supervisors meeting last week, in which case they cited the CDC study that was conducted in September. Earlier this year, and basically what that CDC study indicated was that. Was that community and close contact exposures contribute to the spread of COVID nineteen, and the findings of that. Indicated that basically when you're in a environment where you are in close proximity and you are not wearing. Your face covering, that you are twice as likely to have or that you are likely to. Be participant and be a participant in the spread of the disease. And in this particular study. The the people that had the COVID nineteen disease were found to have twice as likely been involved in eating out at a restaurant than those that were. Not a part of that were not presenting with COVID nineteen. So some of the implications that that study brought out was that eating and drinking onsite at locations that offer. Those services are basically higher risk factors than maybe other activities where you are able to. Wear a face covering and and help to try to contain the disease. And so that study basically indicated that that is something that should be taken into account. When considering health orders and other mitigating efforts. However, there were some limitations to that study that I want to point out. First. It the study did not include concurrent activities where other possible activities that the participants engaged in could have occurred. That it also did not distinguish between indoor and outdoor dining options. So there's certainly some limitations to the study in regards to that. It did not distinguish between venues or service delivery methods, meaning. You know, if you were at a Sonic Drive-In versus a crowded bar. So there wasn't any distinction in the study for those types of various type of types of environments. And then adults in in the study were from eleven participating healthcare facilities, and so it wasn't a great representative sample of the US population. And then finally, the participants were all aware of their test results when the interviews were conducted of the study that therefore that could have influenced their responses to the questions about. Their interactions within the community and their close contacts. So. A lot of limitations to that study that was used, but ultimately the LA County Health Department. Really cited the fact that dining out where you have to remove that face covering makes it a higher risk activity, and that's why they chose to implement. That portion of the newer restrictions upon us. And then again, that was only superseded. That order was superseded by our current temporary stay-at-home order. That being said, there is some good news. We currently are on a good track to have forty million doses of vaccine, which will be available in the next two to three weeks. Those forty million doses will only be will only provide about. Enough inoculations for twenty million people because each of the inoculations require two applications about a month apart. So, excuse me. So the first, the first effort that will. That they'll they'll be focusing on the CDC today actually came out with a recommendation that they will target those twenty million toward. The twenty million healthcare workers and three million long-term care facility residents throughout the country as as priority. Now, that's something that the CDC recommended, but is not something that states have to actually follow. So there's still the state management of of the vaccines that is afforded discretion to, in our case, Governor Newsom and the executive staff there. It will take several months or more to provide more or provide for the entire population of the US. And and those vaccines that are ready. Are presenting with about ten to fifteen percent of the people that have been tested with the vaccines are having noticeable side effects. That could range anywhere from just redness of skin where they were injected with the with the vaccine to chills, headaches, body aches and and various things like that. So. There are some some side effects to some of the people that have engaged in the testing. Now, with regards to our stay-at-home order that started yesterday. I asked the all-hazard incident management team to give us an analysis of what that new stay-at-home order really means compared to what we knew life before the stay-at-home order. And with regards to that, outdoor gatherings previously were limited to three households. And now they're trying to scale that back to really only asking people to be involved with those people within their immediate household. And we're going to see that theme throughout the rest of the temporary stay-at-home order. Also, essential retail previously was at basically at normal with proper social distancing within the facility. And now they are asking that thirty-five percent max occupancy of the building only be utilized. Low-risk retail, non-essential retail was asked to be at twenty-five percent max occupancy under the old order. And with the new order with diminishing that by five percent to max occupancy for those for those retailers. Our libraries, same kind of concept there, twenty-five percent max occupancy under the old rules and twenty percent under the new. And then in terms of outdoor fitness facilities, it was pretty much business as usual in in the area that you had to do outdoor fitness. And now they are asking to do fifty percent occupancy of the area or capacity that you had established for those fitness facilities. In terms of personal care facilities, again, another five percent drop from previously and then. With regards to. Brewery, winery, retail operations, it was at normal occupancy down to twenty percent occupancy. Again, that's just for. down to twenty percent occupancy. Again, that's just for, um, um, retail and, and, and taking home, uh, those, those, uh, those, uh, items. Uh, card room outdoor operations from fifty percent to closed, outdoor batting cages and go-karts and mini golf from fifty, uh, remains at fifty percent. Outdoor museums, galleries, zoos, aquariums and botanical gardens, down to fifty percent. And then here again, we're seeing that trend that I told you about, uh, the single households. Outdoor activities at beaches, parks and trails that are asking that you cut down, uh, any interaction to only, uh, limiting your act, interactions to members of your household and the same at, uh, at our recreational facilities such as our golf courses, tennis courts and pickleball courts. And then finally, uh, unfortunately, we had, uh, we went from open playgrounds to closing those playgrounds except for those at schools and childcare facilities. Um, our cost to date in regards to our response to this, uh, COVID, uh, pandemic, uh, we, we've spent eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, uh, and, and supplies, equipment and services. And then our, our personnel costs, including, uh, you know, amounts of overtime and, uh, and just COVID dedicated hours is at one million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars, uh, totaling, uh, two million seven hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, then, uh, one, uh, one aspect that we're really doing a great job at is, is, uh, utilizing our, our volunteers. And we've had a lot of different volunteers participate in, um, our Incident Management Team, um, a lot of, uh, very, uh, highly intelligent, dedicated, uh, professionals in emergency management that we've been able to utilize. Uh, and they've contributed a lot of, uh, various hours. And in this particular case, in terms of our reimbursement from FEMA, it's almost them working is almost, uh, it's an in-kind match. So it's almost like them paying to work here. Um, and because we're allowed to claim that toward our twenty-five percent that we have to cover of the seventy-five percent cost that are, uh, refunded. Uh, so speaking of our recovery, uh, funds, uh, this, uh, shows you the amount that we have received to date, five hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two. And, uh, we are still on tap for closing out, uh, those three requests for public assistance, uh, along with, uh, uh, and then, uh, re- receiving five hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-two, uh, dollars back. In which case we will then submit our request for public assistance project number four, which will, uh, take us from, uh, September, I believe, uh, September, uh, first cost, uh, through, uh, the day that we file it. And that will be whatever that amount is. And we haven't tallied that up quite, uh, quite yet. We'll do that when we make the submission. So that's our, uh, recovery summary. And, uh, that brings me to the end of our update of COVID nineteen. Uh, pending any questions that you, uh, Mr. Mayor have or the council has.
Thank you, Randy. I'm sure there'll be some questions or I'm guessing anyway. I'll turn it over. Do you mind closing the presentation, Randy? Unless council members have, that way I can see everyone. Right now I can't see. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, council members, any comments or questions? No, okay. Well, I can tell you that we had a, um, we've had a lively discussion recently when it comes to everything that we want to do to advocate for the restaurants. So I don't know if some of my colleagues had thoughts about that, but we spent a lot of time, oh, considering many different options and working with our neighboring cities in the South Bay. South Bay City Council of Government had a meeting last night. Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel and I were on that meeting. And as a result of that meeting, Supervisor Han was on there as well. She was one of the two votes that were in support of allowing outdoor dining with Supervisor Catherine Barker as well. Uh, we had her on, her perspective about what we could do as a group, as a region. And obviously the case has been going up since the order went into effect last week. So that doesn't help our case at all. But we, the council is working very diligently behind the scenes with city staff and with our neighboring cities and with the council of governments to see what can be done. Uh, anyone want to weigh in on that in the council? Carol, then we'll go to Mayor.
I just was, I was, thank you, Randy, for your up, for your recap. And it was really good to see that we're getting reimbursed for the effort that we put into it. I know that, um, City of El Segundo definitely was a standout incident group that a lot of other cities relied upon. So I think that, um, I'm just pleased to see that. And thanks to the group for doing such an amazing job and that we're actually going to be, be reimbursed for a lot of that money. Um, and then, um, I know as was, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Boyle's mentioned, we did have a discussion about what we can do about helping the restaurants and our businesses. We have put it in the hands of the city manager and the city attorney to come back and give some oppor- some, um, proposed items to us to look at in the very near future. So, please stay, um, please know that we're behind you and we're trying to look for any opportunity to ensure that you guys, that the restaurants receive the, um, focused attention that they, they deserve. So, we're definitely, uh, in, on your, on your court and, um, we will be continuing to work toward, toward helping you.
Thank you, Councilmember Purstuck. Mayor Pro Tem, and then you want to, okay, we'll go to Mayor Pro Tem and, uh, Councilmember Nickel.
I, I just wanted to echo Mr. Mayor a bit of what you said, that regionally, we continue to press both the county and state to allow us to come up with regionally appropriate, uh, remediations or, or mitigation steps for this. Uh, to that end, you know, there are a number of, of, of potential ideas. We've obviously failed marvelously at getting consideration for just the beach cities or just our own city to date. Uh, but there are, uh, various ideas about carving out part of the medical officer response, whether it's just the pandemic response piece, because obviously the County Department of Public Health does a number of functions, about fifteen core functions it has to be able to do. Uh, most of those we don't really need, uh, we don't need to be carved away from, but for pandemic response, are the things that we could do or things that we could do in conjunction with our neighboring cities or other cities within the county that seem to have the same density or other factors that are allowing us that to currently be a bit more successful. So that effort, I mean, I, I don't know how many people we had on that call last night. Uh, there must have been sixty people on that, uh, from the, from the governments just in the South Bay. Uh, it went very long. Well, there's a number of, of ideas out there. Uh, as we really try to push this forward to make sure that things that are appropriate for our residents that allow them to operate safely, but maintain some of the economic viability that we have are things we're trying to take forward. The numbers are, are certainly pretty bleak, uh, right now, but, uh, I think it's a challenge that, that we've demonstrated larger through, through the staff and, and Randy's guidance here that, that we've been able to carry through. And we owe it to our, our businesses to, to really try and come up with ways to allow them to weather this storm.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Nickel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just to echo my fellow councilmembers', uh, words. Our discussion ranged from discussing what are the current rules, how we can try to combat those rules, what kind of workarounds they're working at regionally, what we can try to do locally. And, uh, what we also discussed too is within the current rules, the picnic tables at Civic Plaza are open. You can pick up lunch to go from a local restaurant and you can sit on those picnic tables. There is no, nothing within this, uh, order that states you cannot do that. The park near the fire pit and the picnic tables that are at the park, another wonderful place. It's wide open. It's not taped off. You can pick up to-go food and eat there. There are public benches along Main Street. Great place to sit and have a cup of coffee. Um, you could even to, uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Christic made this comment. She said, take a blanket and go lay it down in the park and have a picnic, you know, pick up lunch. So we can, as a community, do our best to support our local businesses, uh, despite the onerous rules that are, uh, laid out in this safer at home order. All the while, we can do that while also really staying safe. Go to lunch with your family, right? Have lunch with your wife, take your child to lunch on their lunch break from their school pod or something. But, uh, we're doing what we can and we will continue to update the community, uh, through our various channels. I know, Mr. Mayor, you're great about sharing videos on social media, uh, on updates for the meetings that you sit in on, and I thank you for that. Uh, that saves us a lot of, uh, a lot of time and us from doing, um, the same action. So thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. I know, um, Deputy City Manager Voss, Barbara, you want to say something?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, just wanted to, uh, acknowledge Randy and his team, the All-Hazard Incident Management Team. Uh, Randy reminded me today that, uh, you know, when we were about a month into this, he said this might last over a year, maybe two years. And he said that I looked at him like he was crazy. So here we are and, uh, Randy, w- with his leadership has been so helpful in, in guiding us. Um, but regarding the restaurants, uh, LA County just announced a thirty thousand dollar grant for restaurants. Um, it's geared towards, uh, restaurants with fewer than twenty-five employees and five or fewer locations. So it's really for those smaller restaurants, um, that aren't large chains and able to be open in other states or elsewhere, um, and able to survive that way. So hopefully, um, that, that opens on the, the minute on the third, so you can apply, um, on December fourth, and it's only open for a short window. So I just wanted to encourage every restaurateur, restaurant owner who's out there watching this. Um, check out the City of El Segundo's Facebook page. Um, we're going to have it on our elsagundobusiness.com page. Um, if you're not, uh, following our, our Facebook page, we, please do. There's a lot of information that I put up there all the time. Um, trying to keep everyone updated on these orders, um, and, um, just different programs to support businesses. Um, and also just wanted to, um, let everyone know that we have a newscast, City News, that's on El Segundo, um, media YouTube. Um, and that comes on Thursdays and we have a council recap that will come out tomorrow. Um, so we will be getting the information out there and, and I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to access it.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Voss. Appreciate it. And Randy. Okay, I'm gonna turn over to Councilmember Drew.
Uh, yeah, I won't take too much more time on this. I, I, I just, you know, for the community out there, obviously judging from the emails and the text messages, this is a, uh, a, a very frustrating time for everyone. Uh, be you a business owner or a patron. Um, it's really nice to see the outpouring of support from, uh, from the community, um, to try to support these businesses. And the only thing I really wanted to get across is, is that rest assured that we are literally looking at every possible opportunity to help out the businesses. There's, I mean, quite literally nothing that we're not doing that we possibly can, and even some things probably shouldn't be. But we're pushing the envelope as far as we can to try to get things, uh, flowing in a direction that we can help businesses out. So, um, keep supporting as much as you can and, uh, we'll hopefully get some updates for you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Drew. And just one last point, uh, Mayor Pro Tem touched on this. We had over sixty people on that call last night that was pulled together with about seventy-two hours' notice. And I've been involved with the COG for a few years now, and that was the first time we had an item like that presented that had unanimous support. Every member that voted last night voted to support outdoor dining. And that is even considering the uptick and even some of the cities in our COG like Inglewood that have had more of an uptick, supported even carving out our part of the South Bay and looking at us independently if need be. Uh, we don't necessarily support that idea, but, uh, the whole group felt strongly that outdoor dining should be allowed. If not now, at least give us some ideas, some clear metrics in terms of when that will be allowed versus arbitrary actions. All right, um, anything else, Mr. Mitnick or Randy on this, on COVID in general? Are we done on this one?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think you've covered it. And, uh, Barbara will follow up to make sure we put on our website a summary of all the actions we're taking on behalf of the city and the restaurant owners in particular. So it'll be a good source of information for the community.
Thank you. Oh, one thing, Barbara, too, I think I read that the, I think the funds are limited because it did say on that grant program with the county, first come, first served. And that if the priority is to those that set up outdoor dining, um, in advance or something. So let's make sure we make that clear to encourage people to sign up so that more of our restaurants can get those funds.
And I just wanted to add thank you to the mayor and council members for your advocacy for businesses. Um, all of you have really gone to the bat, uh, gone to bat for our businesses and, um, we're doing everything we can just to echo all of your comments.
Your staff's doing a great job. Your department's doing a great job, Barbara. Thanks, thanks, Barbara. Thanks, Randy. Okay, next up we have item A, procedural motions, consideration of a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions, uh, resolutions on the agenda by title only. Stating your last name to have a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Drew, so moved.
Thank you, sir.
First second.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstuck?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel?
Aye.
And Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
All right, it passed five oh.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, consent calendar. Do we have any pull-in items one through four? Doesn't look like it. Okay, do I have a motion to approve items one through four?
Drew, uh, so moved.
Nickel second.
Hilarious. Everyone's waiting for the other person and then we end up stepping on each other. I think it was Pimentel first and Nickel second, right? Is that what you heard, ma'am?
Sure.
Oh, Drew, okay.
I, I have Drew and Nickel.
Okay.
Or even.
Okay, we'll do a voice vote, please.
Certainly. Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstuck?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor, and Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
Okay, uh, consent passes five oh.
Thank you. And while we have you, City Clerk, item five, approve, uh, the proposed twenty twenty-one city council meeting calendar.
Yeah. Any questions, discussion, any comments? All right.
So we just did a motion to approve, right?
Just a motion to approve.
Pimentel, so moved.
Thank you.
First second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstuck?
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel?
Aye.
Just get on a roll with that council member thing. Sorry. Mayor Boyle?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, your calendar passes five oh, and the clerk's office will post it for you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item six, receive and file ad hoc pension committee update report and direct staff to begin the process to issue pension obligation bonds, POBs, at ninety-five percent of the CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability, UAL, at time of issuance in order to maximize the present value savings to take advantage of historically low interest rates. Mr. Mitnick, who's going to be reporting on this?
Mayor, members of your council, your, uh, pension subcommittee consisting of Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Pimentel, and Councilmember Scott Nickel will give you, um, an update, um, on where they are. And then staff, uh, Joe Lilio, our finance director and our, um, financial advisor, Mark Young, uh, with the firm of Canon and Public Finance will be, um, available for questions. So I, I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Nickel and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, fellow councilmembers. I appreciate the time. Uh, back in July of this year, uh, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Pimentel and myself were, uh, appointed to this subcommittee to work with staff to review, um, the pension liability that we have at the city as well as our ability to potentially exit CalPERS system. Uh, we met a few times and, uh, what staff's going to present to you tonight is something that I truly believe, uh, provides long-term financial stability for the city. Uh, it provides a level, it levels out the debt payments over the next twenty years. Um, you know, three of us here tonight, uh, all campaigned in twenty eighteen. Uh, Councilmember Drew, Mayor Pimentel and myself and, uh, and Councilmember, uh, Purstick and Mayor Boyle, I'm sure you heard the same thing when you originally, uh, knocked on doors, uh, what was that? Four years ago. The unfunded liability for the city is one of the number one talking points that we were all asked about. It was something that the lion's share of our constituents are very concerned about. You know, what does the financial future of this city look like? And how are we going to pay for the debts that we have, um, signed up for? So I'm really excited what staff's going to show you tonight, because I know for me, and I can't speak for all of you, but for me, I would like to think that the policies that we set while on this board will be policies that can transcend time. They can be policies that will, that council members in the future will look back and say, I really am happy about the choices that that council made back in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. And, uh, you know, for me, this is one of the most important items that I think we are going to discuss in all of the madness that we've discussed this year. Uh, oh, Councilmember Pimentel, is there anything else that you can think of before we tee this up to Joe to, uh, really talk about the meat of this?
Yeah, I, I think so. You know, this is, it's such a big item and I think we owe it a bit to people watching this or who'll go back and view it to just cover what we mean by, by the pension liability. And to that, just in, in a very layman sense, if I'm a new employee in the City of El Segundo in nineteen ninety-nine, If I'm a new employee in the city of El Segundo in 1999. You know, part of my paycheck comes out toward my pension. And part of what the city contributes goes to my pension and those are invested with CalPERS. And that's based on an assumption of how much CalPERS is going to grow that money, how much we'll continue to keep contributing. And then what my lifespan is. Now, happily, our employees live a lot longer than people thought they were going to live in 1999. Unhappily, CalPERS has not performed as well as we thought it would in 1999. And as those numbers have gone forward, and it's important for people to remember, there's been times in this city where we employed nearly 400 people. So as this has gone forward, the difference between what we have already allocated for people to retire. And what we owe for the retirement is now $155 million. And that number will continue to grow. This year, it's going to go up by another $7 million based on CalPERS performance. Now, that money that exists, that $155 million, we owe just as you would a mortgage. We pay to service that debt. We pay it 7% and that's a Cal, that's a CalPERS rule. We have a unique opportunity as a result of COVID and all the sort of dystopic world we're living in this year, that the rates are very low. So we, in trying to aggressively solve for this $155 million issue. That as Councilmember Nickel pointed out, and we used to point out during the campaign, comes down to $17,000 per person, right? $55,000 a household or something like that. So our ability in these troubled times to grab that low interest rate and attach it to this. And flatten out what right now, and you'll see in a graph that Director of Finance will show, in 18 years shows us being completely upside down financially. Our ability to grab that is a unique opportunity in time. And I think it's one that we would be really wise to seize because, you know, these pension obligation bonds are not a new debt. We have a debt already. The $155 million is a debt that we service at a very high interest rate. And there's an opportunity to go into a very low interest rate. So I think it's important. I I look forward to to Joe Lilio, Director of Finance, presenting this. I think it's a unique opportunity in time. And I think that he's also going to sprinkle in some good news about some of the things that we have also done as a city in years past to get ahead. That 155 is a terrible story now, but it could have been a lot worse if it were not for things that previous councils did. And things that we have done to take steps to cancel, to attach some of the other things that go into the pension puzzle. So Joe, with that, I'll turn it over to you, but this is a unique opportunity. Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Nickel. Tracy, I'm receiving a message when I try to share my screen. It says host disabled participant screen sharing. So is there any way to enable that so I can share the PowerPoint presentation?
Let me check because that should not have happened. Randy just did it.
There we go. Yeah, while you're getting set up, can can we take a moment to declare victory over our our pension medical? Fill this with a happy story. Yes, absolutely. Oh, actually, I'll turn it to you. You could speak to it more eloquently than I about OPEB, which is the other benefits we pay to our retirees. Cheaply medical. Joe, if you could talk to what the 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 success of that before we get into the the potential bonds. Sure, absolutely. So what Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel is referring to is OPEB, which is our other post-employment benefits. Which for the city of El Segundo is retiree medical insurance. So the city did open up a trust, an OPEB trust back in 2008. And we've been diligently funding that trust every year with the exception of one year during the Great Recession. And those returns have been doing outstanding. And the trust right now is funded at a level of 52%, so 52% of our our total OPEB liabilities are funded. With that, the city no longer has to add additional contributions into the trust. And that saves about 548,000 per year. That's what we've been putting into the trust each year. The interest alone, earnings over the next 11 years, so by 2031, the trust is anticipated to be 100% funded. And then at that point, we'll be able to actually withdraw funds beginning in 2031 to begin paying for retiree medical insurance. Which that will further save the city additional money. So that's excellent news, great to hear. And we were not expected, so every every two years, we have. A actuarial report done, so a full-blown actuary report done on the OPEB liability and and OPEB trust. And we were not anticipated to be funded at this level quite yet, not for another several years. Because of the trust, again, outstanding performance, we were ahead of schedule. So no additional funding is required into the pin, the OPEB trust. Again, that is excellent news, saving the city 548,000 a year moving forward. Joe, before you you move on from that, because I think we should celebrate that as a success, can 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 you disclose what that total liability was? Yes. Nearly $60 million dragon that that you have slain. So, yeah, the the total liability was just under 60 million for the open. Yeah, just under $1 million. And again, we're about 52% funded in the trust. That's a remarkable success. Congratulations. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, can everybody, everybody see the presentation? Okay, great. So background, so in July, city council appointed the Mayor Pro Tem. And Councilmember Nickel to the ad hoc pension committee to review the city's pension obligations. The committee has met four times in September, October and twice in November. The committee's work has focused on issuing pension obligation bonds as a mechanism to significantly reduce. The city's recurring pension costs. The committee has also looked into conducting a review of the city's ability to exit CalPERS pension system. And use of alternative retirement options. So that that's still ongoing. There'll be report coming to council at a future council meeting on that. The committee has also done a cursory view of funding status of the OPEB retiring insurance and we just talked about that. So defined benefit retirement pension plan, that's what CalPERS is. So the city provides retirement benefits for full-time employees by contracting through CalPERS. CalPERS offers a defined benefit plan where retirement benefits are based on a formula. This formula takes into consideration three main factors, the employee's years of service. Age at retirement and then final compensation of the employee when they retire. CalPERS retirement benefits are funded by contributions from employees. So employees are contributing anywhere from. As little as 7% for some groups, all the way up to almost 14% for other groups. It just depends on what group they fall into. The city contributes. So the city's normal cost on an annual basis is $4.2 million. And then we have the unfunded liability cost, which I'll get into that as well. For this year, it was around 11 million. And then it's also funded by investment earnings. When the investment earnings do not meet the expectations and those expectations CalPERS had set is 7% each year. So. Each fiscal year, which for CalPERS, it's July 1st and June 30. So on June 30, if they have not met that 7%. Rate of return on their portfolio, there will be an investment loss. And over the last two years. As an example, there has, there have been investment losses. They have not met that 7% return. So this is what we're really here to talk about is the unfunded actuarial liability. I'm going to refer to it as the UAL moving forward. So the UAL is the pension debt, which. Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel eloquently eloquently defined earlier. So it is the pension debt the city owes to CalPERS on behalf of existing retirees and active employees. CalPERS assesses the city an interest rate of 7% on the UAL. Employers have the responsibility to pay down their UAL by increasing contributions to CalPERS. So a total UAL owed by the city of El Segundo on all the plans, since it's public safety and miscellaneous. Is $151 million. The remaining UAL amortized period for the city is 20 years. And I'll get into that in a minute. The city has taken steps to reduce that amortization amortization period down to 20 years. By maintaining the status quo, the UAL with CalPERS, the city will pay a total of $130 million. On interest on that 151 million in principal. So if you add that together, that's $281 million. That's a lot of money. And this is just a snapshot. If you look at the bottom right-hand column, there, $281 million is the expected payments. Total payments over the next 20 years, principal and interest. So city council has been extremely proactive at addressing the city's UAL over the last several years. And I'll go over some of these very successful tools that the city has utilized. One is reducing the length of the UAL amortization period with CalPERS. Also referred to as a fresh start, or in layman's terms, it's equivalent to refinancing of a mortgage. The city has opted to use this tool, reducing the amortization period from 30 years down to 20 years. So we've done that. Across the board and all all of our plans, so fire, police and miscellaneous. Miscellaneous just means non-swarm personnel. So we've taken advantage of this tool that CalPERS offers and we've reduced the amortization period from 30 down to 20 years. This has saved, one, it's done two things. It has eliminated the negative amortization which existed previously with the 30-year amortization. Schedule. This has saved the city a total of about $7.1 million. We want to point out, though, unlike your your mortgage, when you refinance from 30 years down to 20 years. Usually you're going to get a much better interest rate. Here, CalPERS still assesses the same interest rate, 7%. So it doesn't matter if you go from 30 to 20 or 15, they're still going to assess the 7% interest rate. Additional discretionary payments towards the UAL. So this is equivalent of someone making additional payments towards their their mortgage. The city has taken advantage of this tool over the last several years and we saved about $3.75 million utilizing this tool. Prepayment of the annual UAL. So you have an option to pay it either monthly over the course of a year, or you can prepay the entire UAL payment each July. And CalPERS discounts your your total UAL by about 3.5%. So we've been doing this over the last four years. This has saved the city $1.25 million over the last four years. Another tool is setting up a pension trust to pre-fund CalPERS UAL obligations. City has set up an IRS Section 115 pension trust in 2017. We first funded it in 2018. And the current balance is about $4.5 million. So these are all excellent tools that the city has taken advantage. Again, council has been very proactive at doing this. Most of our colleagues in neighboring cities have not done this quite of a robust plan. All these tools have saved the city a total of $12 million to date. This is, you know, significant money that the city has saved. However, as I mentioned before, we're still being assessed a 7% interest rate. And that's what we need to address next.
Joe, can I interject real quick?
Yes, absolutely.
There was also the, we also paid down negative amortization, negative return years, if I remember correctly. At least a couple occasions with saved interest. I didn't see that noted in here. That was another thing that you recommended several years back that we did. And can you, you explained all of them really well, as did Councilman Nickel and Mayor Pro Tem, I think did an incredible job of of the overview. Could you touch on just the pension trust fund a little bit before we get to the POB? What it's used for?
So the pension trust fund. You you can use it for various things. The purpose that the city of El Segundo set up for. Was to help offset our pension obligations during the peak of the cost. So we're expected to hit our peak costs around 2030, 2031. At that point, we would tap into the pension trust to help offset that. Those peaks and to normalize our, stabilize our budget. So it would be used basically as a budget stabilization tool in those peak years. That's if we we don't issue any POBs. So a- as an example, our current payment, UAL payment for this year was 11 million. Next year, I believe it goes up to 11.6 and then it peaks. Let me just go back to this slide real quick. So it peaks. Around $17.6 million. You can see it escalates each year. So that pension trust would be utilized to help offset some of those higher years. And to help act as a budget stabilization tool for the city. Joe, Mr. Mayor, if I may, as we anticipate that liability to continue to grow. Like I said, we know it will go up by $7 million more dollars this year. That pension trust is something that we we'd likely as a tool that we will continue to have to use to complement our efforts. Or it is one that we may choose to use. I don't want to be presumptive. Because this this, while we are looking to attack the UAL as it stands now, that doesn't stop it from growing. That just, it changes the way that we service it. Correct. And another another tool of this pension trust is if the city does go on. To ultimately issue POBs. It does not mean that there will not be a future UAL added. So again, each year that at June 30, if CalPERS does not meet that 7% return, there will be a new UAL added to the books. If they exceed the 7%, then there'll actually be an investment gain added to the books. But that hasn't happened in a while. So any future in- investment losses by the CalPERS portfolio. Again, we'll add new UALs down the road and this pension trust can be used to help negate some of those. Future new UALs that will be added as well. So that's also another tool, not a purpose of this pension trust.
Joe, I just touched on one thing that we've mentioned, you've mentioned several times in the past, but it's certainly relevant for this conversation. I think one of the most frustrating things about CalPERS is that there have been years where we've had a bull run in the market and they have had negative returns. Or single-digit returns or 2% returns in a fund. And so it's really frustrating because their hands are tied to a certain degree too, because the legislators choose what they can and cannot invest in. So the vehicle itself is challenging, I think is part of the problem we're looking to solve. Is that is that a fair statement? Take more of that control in our own hands?
So yes, that that gives us absolutely a lot more control with that. That trust, yes. And and what you're referring to, Mayor, is divestment from the legislator. So they've. Used their legislative tools to divest in certain market sectors. And it has hurt some of the returns on in CalPERS. Okay, and please feel free to stop me and ask questions along the way. Okay, so how do pension obligation bonds work? So pension obligation bond is a taxable debt. Debt issuance used to extinguish some or all of the city's UAL. Proceeds would be directly deposited with the city's pension system, which is CalPERS, and invested in the CalPERS investment portfolio. So the day that the POBs would be sold on the marketplace, the following day, those funds would be sent over to CalPERS. And it would reduce the city's UAL with CalPERS. POBs are issued only when the all-in interest rate of the bond issue is significantly below the actuarial rate. Of interest factored into the calculation of the UAL. So in this case, again, CalPERS is assessing us a 7% rate. And it's anticipated that when we would go to market, we would get an interest rate in our bonds of anywhere between maybe 2.85. And 3%, somewhere in that range. And so significantly lower than the 7% that CalPERS is assessing us. Debt service payments for the bond issuance will then replace the city's UAL payments that would have been owed to CalPERS. So instead of paying CalPERS, now we. So instead of paying CalPERS, now we would be paying the the bond payments. The city's funded and unfunded pension status.
Joe, sorry, real quick. That last thing that you made, that we would only be, we'd be paying the bond, not CalPERS. That's only for the unfunded portion, right? So moving forward in twenty twenty two. You know, we're still going to owe for any current. Obligation, correct? Just nothing, nothing, none of the unfunded piece.
Yeah, well, it depends if if the bonds are ultimately issued at a hundred percent or ninety five percent, depends what. But rate we are, we issue the bonds at, but if if we issue it at a hundred percent, then in theory. You know, unless there's a new UAL added to the portfolio. Then, yes, we would only be paying the bond payments. However. We do know that there is an investment loss this past June thirty of twenty twenty. The CalPERS portfolio only earned four point seven percent. So that UAL will show up in next year's actuarial report issued by CalPERS. That will result in about seven million dollar UAL. So that would be.
And so the public knows when we're looking at that. That table that you showed with the different payments, that is only the payment on the unfunded portion each year. That's not our total obligation that we pay to CalPERS each year, correct?
Correct. There's something called a normal cost, which is about four point two million a year the city pays. For all employees. And then this unfunded piece, which is what we're trying to address here.
Correct. Yeah, I know. You know, many of these terms and many of these tables and such we see on a regular basis, so we know them quite well. But I just think for the viewing public's knowledge, so they understand. When we move forward with this presentation, so they can understand what exactly we're looking at. Thanks, Joe.
So per the CalPERS actuary value valuation report, the city's funded ratios. Were about sixty one and a half percent for police, sixty and a half percent for fire. Seventy one point eight percent for miscellaneous. So in aggregate, our city's plans are funded at about sixty five percent. And that's how we come up with this one hundred and fifty one million dollars. That's owed as the UAL. And CalPERS has a strategic target of getting to one hundred percent funding. The goals of issuing a P O B preserve financial flexibility to meet or maintain city services. Industry best practice to repay the UAL amortization period. Within a fifteen to twenty year range. Use of shorter amortization periods to reduce interest costs and better match annual costs with the work life plan of participants. Use of a level dollar repayment schedule to improve the likelihood that funds will be available to meet future payment demands. So this is really key, level dollar payments. So instead of having this fluctuating payment each year that increases, like I mentioned, this year was eleven million and it goes up to, I think. A peak of about seventeen point six million. We would have level payments for the next twenty years on on the UAL, and I'll get into those in a minute. Reasons why financing, why POBs could be a bad idea. Issuing a P O B now does nothing to address future. Possible unfunded actuarial liability growth. I've mentioned that that each year, CalPERS has to meet that seven percent. Otherwise, there will be a new UAL added. CalPERS could overperform from an investment perspective, and we wouldn't have to issue such a large P O B. Well, it's a possibility. I'm not sure that's highly likely. And again, just to reiterate, they have to meet seven percent annual return. Otherwise, there is an investment loss and a new UAL added. So in twenty eighteen nineteen, CalPERS missed it. They came in at six point seven percent. Versus the seven percent. And last year, at June thirty twenty twenty, they came in at four point seven percent. Unknown possible state legislative judicial changes in the future. While this is a possibility, it would not necessarily change the amount that we owe for the UAL. The state and the courts could make pension rule changes to reduce our UAL amounts.
Hey Joe, can I pop in for a second here?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to, we can't say enough how. A P O B is not the panacea. For all your fu- future UAL issues. So right now, we have a liability that we're paying seven percent a year to PERS. We can refinance because we've got low interest rates. We can take advantage of that. Take the interest savings. We're going to talk. When we come back a month later about a UAL policy and where you can direct that savings, the set aside funds. For a future reserve. But just want to point out on this slide that this is not going to solve. Future UAL issues. When CalPERS doesn't perform at their seven percent level. And when your actuarial issues change. So it's an opportunity to take a fixed debt that you have. Have some savings. Create a policy to set it aside. But it's not the panacea. And just as your municipal advisor, I've got a fiduciary responsibility. To just make sure you. Understand that and make sure that the citizens understand that, that. We're not doing POBs to solve forever UAL. UAL is going to come back. And but this is an opportunity to create some savings. To bank some dollars to deal with it in the future. Sorry to jump in, Joe, but I just.
Thank you very much.
Mark, Mark, you mind if I step in for one second on that? But but one thing I think we have to keep taking into consideration is is that. If you're wiping out one fifty, wiping it out, one fifty one is now paid on three percent instead of seven percent. The new UAL is going to be a much smaller number at seven percent.
No, 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 you're you're right, right?
You're muted.
Mark, you're mute.
Sorry about that. Right now, your obligation to meet your future requirements where we're sitting today is your UAL. And CalPERS says if you want to borrow it. Instead of writing us a check today, it's at a seven percent rate. So we're going to borrow at roughly three percent. And so today, our current UAL, if you do a hundred percent prepayment. That'll convert from an obligation to CalPERS on your balance sheet. To now a pension obligation bond. At three percent and your payments annually are going to be significantly less. We know right now. Based on the nineteen twenty returns from CalPERS, they only made four point seven percent. So you're going to get a report from CalPERS next August. That's going to have your UAL go up six, seven percent. There's nothing we can do with the pension obligation bond. To deal with that. What we can do is take effectively a fixed rate mortgage at seven percent. For a current obligation, refinance it. And then have council direct, how much of that savings do we use? To direct towards future UAL obligations.
But I, isn't that what I just said? What I was saying is, is that you, let's just say we did a hundred percent funding, just for sake of. Argument right now, right? We 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 take it and now it gets moved into pension obligation bond. So we're not paying PERS, we're paying. What we borrow, we're paying at that new rate of three percent, right? So because the money goes into PERS. So what you're saying now is, okay, let's just say that we, the return was bad, so we're going to get a new. Number on the UAL, which will happen next year, say. It's that new number, the difference between the one fifty one and the new number, you're still going to have to pay seven percent on that, because that's the new number. But you're paying it on a much smaller piece. Let's say it's another six million dollars.
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I thought. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, and the city will have, I think, a lot more flexibility at addressing that new UAL as well.
Is there, is that it, Joe? Or, oh, no, okay.
Reasons why financing makes sense. So financing removes and unknown costs or replaces UAL costs. Increase with a stable fixed payment amount. This is key. Really having that fixed amount each year over the next twenty years. Interest rates, again, we've already talked about this, historical lows. Issuing a P O B to refinance UAL does not preclude the city from taking part. In any future state court decision. So that does not preclude us from doing that. Even if the pension fund is overfunded, those funds stay in the city CalPERS account. And can be used to cover future UAL shortfalls. Here's a listing of some current municipalities. And special districts that have issued POBs recently. So these are all in California. Pasadena, County of Riverside, so on, City of Gardena issued theirs in November. And they issued theirs at a, this is a little over a hundred million dollars. Some South Bay cities are talking about issuing a P O B. So we got Manhattan Beach. I think Torrance may have already issued theirs. Inglewood's looking at Hawthorne, Gardena, we already talked about. Carson already did issue theirs as well. So while we're not here today to talk about, you know, should we issue it at ninety percent, ninety five percent or a hundred percent. I did want to point out, if we do issue it at ninety percent. The bond issuance would be about one hundred and thirty six point five million. That would still leave twenty eight point one million on the books with CalPERS at that seven percent interest rate. If we issue. At ninety five percent, and I apologize, this is probably impossible for anybody to see on the other side here, but. Ninety five percent, the bond issuance would be about one hundred and forty four million. That would leave about fourteen million on the books with CalPERS though at the seven percent. And if we issued a hundred percent. The bond issuance would be just a little over one hundred and fifty one million. In theory, leaving. No UAL except any new UALs added. And here's chart, if we did issue that one hundred percent. Of the UAL for, so one hundred and fifty one million. Our annual debt payment would be about ten point six million dollars. In year one, there would be a savings of not a little over nine hundred thousand. And so the blue bars here represent the payment with CalPERS. You can see how they escalate. The red bars represents the P O B payment. And you can see that again, first year, it's about a little over nine hundred thousand. And it peaked, I believe. At a little over six million dollars. In the out years that we're saving per year. If you just did a straight line average, it's about two point seven million per year that we're saving. So significant dollars. Again, I already touched on this. I won't reiterate it, but the ad hoc pension committee recommends approving the concept. Of issuing POBs at a minimum level of ninety five percent. And up to a hundred percent. We can actually determine that later. When we go to council to approve the bonds. I put this in here. These are the typical issuance costs. That way council's aware of us. So the the bond issuance costs would be about eight hundred and thirty two thousand dollars.
Joe, I don't mean to slam the brakes on for a minute, but I think on that last slide to make clear, so. So if we went at a ninety five percent of the UAL. Then we will save the city over the period of this bond issue, fifty five million dollars.
The present value, yes, sir.
The present value. So just so the people at home who are watching, that that works out to what, eighty percent of what our general fund budget is every year? For one year, we could be saving. It's basically adding an extra year of city services on for free.
Correct. And it's really because we're reducing that interest rate that we're being.
That's right.
Absolutely.
And Mayor Pimentel, to that point. Our public has seen us argue for an hour over a million dollars. On this dais. And to be able to save fifty five million dollars, and that's at ninety five percent. You know, if we went all the way to a hundred percent, which is one fifty one today. That's not even taken into account the seven million on top of it. The UAL as of twenty twenty one is actually going to be one fifty eight. Right? So one fifty one of one fifty eight still isn't going to cover the whole, but. If that additional borrowed saved us not fifty five, but fifty six point five million dollars. You know, I mean, there's, there's all these little things we heard from someone in public comment tonight about. You know, the budget for a skate park, all these little things. I cannot stress the importance of this. Dollar savings over the time period.
Absolutely.
Okay, was that it for the presentation, Joe?
I'll just touch real quick on. So we would, if council approves this concept tonight. We really have to get moving ASAP, the internal team. So I I'd be finance, working with the municipal advisor, Mr. Mark Young. And putting together a P O B transactional team. Issuing the RFP for bond council, for disclosure council. And so there's a whole chain of events that need to start happening. And another key thing would be the credit rating review and credit rating agency. In late April, receiving the credit, the city has never issued public debt, so we don't have a credit rating. So this will be the first time the city would do this process. And then if everything goes according to plan, the POBs would be issued in the marketplace around June.
Joe, are we assuming triple A rating? Or whatever the equivalent is for municipal?
Mr. Young, I don't know, I can opine on that.
I knew you were going to, I knew you were going to drop that to me. Because the city hasn't issued any debt. Twenty, twenty five years. And also we have COVID related issues. What I've advised Joe is I'm very confident. That the city will receive at least. A double A, double A plus rating. We're going to work really, really hard. And I think the fundamentals are there. To get a triple A. But because you haven't been in the market, we we just have a lot of work to do to. Basically see how the cities performed in the ebbs and flows. And that there's, you know, El Segundo has had some issues in the Great Recession. That we kind of have to see how you did. And also, we we got to see how you're doing right now with COVID. I think the demographics, I think the fundamentals, I think the management. I think the the policies. That you you either have in place now or we're going to put in place. In anticipation. Can get you there, but I I can't guarantee you a triple A. We're going to, we're going to do everything we possibly can. You're definitely going to be in the double A.
And I know revenue composition is a significant factor as well. I figure we've got that covered.
Really well. Oh, yeah, no, no, you're the economics, the revenue compensation, compensation. The response to COVID and the vacancies and issues that how quickly you guys were able to respond, those are all good. But a triple A relies on long term issues. So we're going, we're going to go back and see, how do you guys do over twenty years and ups and downs and. And and in particular, particular issues that relate to El Segundo. And that's just something we're going to work with Scott and Joe and. Again, I think there's a good chance. But we're also, we're in this COVID environment and. Most of our clients have maintained their ratings. Some who have wanted to be upgraded. We're like, that's not going to happen. As long as COVID is out there. You're not going to get upgraded. But the the strongly rated cities, they've maintained their ratings and they've maintained stable outlooks. So we're just going to work, we're going to work with Joe, we're going to work with Scott. Potentially, and we may involve. Depending upon the timing, we may need. depending upon the timing, we may need, uh, one or two electives to help us on the presentation. But we're going to work really, really hard. Uh, and the goal is to try to get to AAA. But I just want to manage expectations. Joe, did I do that okay?
Good answer. Okay, so that, that does, uh, conclude the presentation. Does city council have any additional, uh, questions or, or comments?
The, this isn't related to the P O B. I, this for, I think, Joe, you first brought this up a couple of years ago on the dais, if I recall correctly. I don't know if it was an official vote, but you were certainly asking for opinion. I supported then, I support it now. It's a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned. My question relates to the OPEB. And I know other cities, for example, Inglewood years ago, in another very difficult financial, financially challenging time, actually paid out their OPEB and got out of that liability altogether. And worked with their union groups to come up with a different health benefit, if you will, upon retirement. Has the ad hoc committee explored that at all in term, I know we're well-funded relative to other cities, but in terms of the OPEB and looking at getting out of that entirely, has that been on the table?
Could I touch just a bit of that, Mr. Mayor? One thing we looked at is with the actuarial outlook on OPEB and no longer having to contribute, you know, the $600,000 per year that the city was doing to this point, that that would be a potential funding source in our debt policy for debt service on the P O Bs. That we would be able to allocate that $600,000 and just move that line item over and allocate it that way as a, as a movement from that, from the general fund dollars. But in terms of buying it out, is not something that we had broached for, for OPEB. We looked at a reallocation of those newly liberated funds to be something that we could use in our debt policy for the debt service on the bonds.
And if I, if I could, if I could hop in, uh, I'll just tell you, is one of our recommendations is for you all to adopt a UAL policy in terms of where you're going to be directing savings. To the extent that you're, you've got a fully funded OPEB and you're going to direct savings from, uh, annual contributions from the OPEB towards paying down P O Bs, that's huge. Rating agencies are going to love that. And that will be a huge opportunity to help us argue for AAA rating. But that, that's, I love the fact that you bring it up. And we're bringing it up early. It's something for you all to be thinking about because it would be a credit positive.
Okay, thank you. Joe, great job. Mark, thank you. And, um, Chris and Scott, thank you for being on the committee. Outstanding work and recommendations. So, are we, I think we need a motion then. Uh, I guess the question I have, Joe, is then maybe this is for the committee or you, I'm not sure, but why 95 versus 100? What, why keep that 5%?
Can, can I speak to that? Joe, tell me if I've gone wildly off, off the thread on this. There's some uniqueness in the CalPERS rules that, let's say this year they had done great and they made their, their, their discount rate, they, they grew at 7%. And we out, we did a UAL bond issue, P O B for 151 for that entirety. And then they outkicked the coverage. And all of a sudden the UAL declines because they've outpaced, they grew at 10% and our UAL number goes down to 143. Well, that money that we have paid to the CalPERS, those, that, those dollars are stranded. We cannot take them out. Nor can we reallocate them for different employees. The only thing they would sit in there for would be if there was another run of underperformance from CalPERS, we could use it to go forward for a future unfunded liability. But otherwise, those assets we've overpaid into CalPERS are stranded. So the idea of doing 95% is by keeping that 5% delta in there, that little wiggle, you don't risk overpaying CalPERS and having a stranded asset that you can't use.
Does the, but we are going to get, okay, so once we do the P O B issuance, if there was a overpayment or there's, there are funds left available, we'd be able to get lay for some kind of return on that money, wouldn't we, Joe? If it was just sitting there?
Uh, no, it would get the return on whatever the portfolio is making.
Oh, so go directly to CalPERS. I see the entirety. We would overpay potentially. Is that the issue?
It, well, we're, wh- whether we issue the, the bonds at 95 or 100%. Um, it, it, I, I think what we're talking about is future returns. So if the portfolio and CalPERS overperforms in, uh, 2022, 2023, 2024, and so on, um, those, um, that overperformance, um, those, uh, we would be overfunded now. So we would have, uh, UAL sitting there of, uh, funds that are owed to the city, but we wouldn't be able to tap in.
But we wouldn't be getting a return on our money, essentially. The money would just be paid out, we'd be earning no interest. That would be the opportunity cost, correct?
It, it, it would be making it the, the return of the portfolio, um, mayor, but it, but it, it, potentially you could have millions of dollars sitting there. That's what happened in the early 2000s when, uh, CalPERS became super funded.
But, but Joe, I, I, I think, uh, again, the point, I, I think tonight the decision is do we want to move forward on pension obligation bonds?
Right.
Decision, do we do 90, 95%, 100%? We've thrown out one structural option, level debt service over the term. There's a number of different debt service structures that I, I think we have to present to Scott and Joe to look at, see how it affects cash flow and, and come back to you all. So I think tonight it's the, are we going to start the process because we need the lawyers to start the paperwork to come back to you in January to then have approval to start the validation process? But I, I don't think tonight we need to pick 95, 90, 100 or a structure, but more. Is this something you want to do? So we can start the.
Mark, I don't mean to, I don't mean to cut you off, but I think, uh, the mayor's line of questioning is more in line of, you know, just understanding. Understanding if they, if it overperforms, what happens. But let me ask a better question, maybe a question that's more, um, likely to come true. Fast forward 10 years from now, when our payment, if we do nothing, our payment is supposed to be 16 million dollars. Okay? And CalPERS underperforms on that 7%. What does our payment look like then? Right? Because then it's even larger than 16. So let me ask you this question then. We do, we issue a P O B. Our, our unfunded liability is essentially funded then, right? Because we have now funded, we're fully funded, correct? Yes, in theory. Yeah, right? And CalPERS underperforms. They perform at, for, again, 4.3% versus 7%. Are we on the hook? The dark, we don't have any unfunded liability, so our number is not varying at that point, right? We are not attached to the, to the peaks and valleys of CalPERS performance, correct?
Yeah, we have, we'll have future UALs that we're going to have to contend with.
Future, but I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about this 151.
Yeah, the one, the 151, your, your 151, you prepay it, you're going to be taking your 7% effective loan from CalPERS. You're going to convert it into debt on a P O B. That 151 is going to go into the $400 billion CalPERS portfolio. You're not going to have a side fund. You're not going to have this separate fund with special investments for El Segundo. So it's going to go in there and a hundred million dollars, 150 million going into 400 billion is not going to move the needle. So the decisions that CalPERS makes going forward that is going to affect their investment returns is not going to be affected by your 150 million going into a $400 billion portfolio. The, uh, decisions you make reflective on your employees, your safety, your miscellaneous, how your act, the actuarial assumptions that change relative to your employee base are going to be no different if you issued a P O B versus not doing a P O B. So making a decision to do the pension obligation bond with CalPERS and not having a side fund investment is not going to affect anything going forward in terms of your future UAL.
Okay, um, I still, I still, hey, Mark, I, it may be Joe, I don't know, someone else, but I don't see the, I know we're not wanting to decide on the 90, 95, 100. I don't understand the downside, like the downside risk, the 100% is not clear to me. It seems to me that we would embrace this low interest opportunity. Uh, but regardless, regardless, on the notion of structure, are there structures available to us such that the amortization is front-loaded? Or is it, uh, have to be a flat coupon or, or payment amount? What, what is that? Are there very?
Oh, great, great question. And this is, again, you guys are kind of doing the same thing Manhattan Beach did. They had three different council meetings. We talked about this. And they were focusing on 100%. Do we do that? And they kind of, kind of said, yeah, we want to. And then it was structure. So the decision they made was, yes, we want to do this. We're not prepared right now to say 100%. We're not prepared to, and I, we gave them, you know, one scenario, level debt service over the existing, uh, amortization. But if, if you, you know, as Joe knows, if you prepay, uh, CalPERS lets you do a fresh start and you can determine how you want to re-amortize. So with the pension obligation bonds, for example, you have three different tiers. You've got safety, you've got police, fire miscellaneous, and they have different maturities. You could decide, wow, I'd like to have all my plans be the same maturity. So you could shorten the maturity of two of your plans to match your, your, um, smallest one. Move the amortization around a little bit. So now, wow, okay, we've realized savings, budgetary savings annually, and we've shortened the maturity of our furthest plan. So there's a, there's a lot of opportunities. I think tonight it's conceptually, do we want to do this? And if you do, it starts the process of having the lawyers draft documents. But then we're going to come back to you in January with, at that point, I always call them bookends. Their param, parameters, maximum maturity, maximum amount of UAL we prepay, maximum interest rate. Get that started because there's a 90-day process to go to the courts and get it validated. And then we can be coming back to you and showing you lots of options in terms of structure, debt service savings, budgetary savings.
I, I think, Mark, if I can echo that, one of the critical things for this evening is if we, as a council, want to do this, the, let's do this conceptually is important now because we could fine tune down the road, but you are looking at a six to seven month launch time for this. And if we want to get these rates, we, we would have to move quickly. So there's room to adjust our structures and our amounts. But the part to get the, the pens to paper, if we're going to do it, we should do it, uh, with some alacrity.
Yeah, Chris, you're absolutely right. And what we, if you made the decision tonight to move forward, we would come back to you, I think it's January 19th, Joe?
Yes.
We'd come back January 19th and we would be coming to you with a resolution that defines maximum parameters. The maximum amount we would issue, the furthest maturity, identifying the maximum amount of UAL we would prepay and an interest rate as well as an indenture that just effectively describes the terms of the bonds. Come to you with that. If you approve that, that then starts the process of going through a validation, which is a 90-day period. Within that 90-day period, we would be working with Joe and Scott to look at different structures. And if you want to move this structure around a little bit, you want to shorten maturities and all that, we'd be using that 90 days uh, to look at that. And at the same time, developing the process to go to the rating agencies and get you guys a credit rating, which we, uh, going to work as hard as possible to get that AAA.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any questions, comments before we, first we have to receive and file the report? I should say Carol says no. Lance, I haven't heard from you. Are you good, Lance? Councilman Drew? Okay. So, and Chris, Scott, you guys good? Can't see you on my phone.
Good. And if, if you guys had any questions for the city treasurer, I asked him to, uh, be on the call tonight as well. So, Mr. Robinson is available.
Okay. I think we're all good. Do we have council consensus to receive and file the report? Is there anyone opposed to that? No? Okay, good. Our next item is, stating your last name, we need a motion, directing staff, or someone would like to entertain such thing, to begin the process of issuing P O Bs, pension obligation bonds at 95%, I'm just reading it verbatim, at 95% of the CalPERS unfunded actuar, actuarial liability at time of issuance in order to maximize the present value savings, taking advantage of historically low interest rates. I think the caveat there would be, we're not saying at 95%. We're saying that we want to begin the process of issuing pension obligation bonds, uh, the level of which to be decided in the future. Someone would like to make a motion on that?
First stick, so moved.
Okay, Boyle's second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Prustak?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Aye.
Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
You passed by both.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Matt. All right, next up we have, we're going straight to the remainder of the council reports. First up, Councilmember Giroux.
Uh, nothing for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Nichol?
Nothing for me. I just want to wish everybody a happy belated Thanksgiving and just please be vigilant and safe out there.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Prustak?
Yeah, nothing for me. Thank you.
Command, Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor. I think they've heard enough.
All right. And I am good. I have nothing other than what we've already discussed earlier. City attorney, anything to report this evening?
Nothing seen to me, our council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, no additional follow-up. I do want to make a correction, um, under public comments. In response, I made reference to the Recreation and Parks Needs Assessment, uh, um, RFP. I actually got the dates wrong. The RFP goes out next week, December 10th. And the proposals are due on the 21st. And in that document, I was looking at the document, it does include this, the skate park. So staff and rec, and, um, community services will follow up with Mr., um, Eldon and make him aware of that. Your next council meeting will be in two weeks on December 15th. And at this point, we're looking at a few, few items of interest. Uh, we'll have to amend our emergency order to be able to be in full compliance with the county's orders. Uh, your finance director, who did a great job tonight on pension obligation bonds, he will give you a preliminary fiscal year 19, 20 year end report. Talked about how we ended last fiscal year. Uh, we'll continue the implementation steps on the P O Bs that were, you just voted on. And we will have a public, or, um, a stat presentation to start the process on the proposed water and wastewater rates. Uh, and then your, um, ACC committee will give you an update report. So that's it for city manager, a follow-up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, I think Hanukkah will start before our next meeting. So happy Hanukkah to everyone in town. And, uh, have a good evening. We are adjourned. Thank you.